Yes, Mrs. Calvert.
My lady, I was just reminded that yesterday I should have given the Court one reference as to where the Court finds the Mig. We've all talked about it.
I know.
It is in Regulation 7 of the Care and Support Charging and Assessment of Resources Regulations, which is found in the Authorities bundle, tab 6, page 47. And it is that regulation that sets out the individualised nature of the assessment.
Thank you.
So turning then to ground three, where we left it yesterday. When the parties received the Graff judgment, we understood it in the same way as Mr. Squires said he'd understood it yesterday, namely that the judge had concluded that the post-Norfolk review process complied with the public sector equality duty. And we see that, we say clearly from paragraph 100 and 101 of the judgment. That was unsurprising to us, particularly as it has been common ground in front of the judge that the PSED applied whenever the public authority exercised its functions. That's the language of section 149.1 that I showed the Court yesterday. So the function being exercised here was for review of the charging policy on 27th of January 2023, and again after the section 114 notice was issued in September 2023. So the judgment makes no reference to the PSED not applying to the decision under challenge. That judgment was handed down formally on the 26th of March, and the order dismissing each of the claim, or dismissing each of the grounds for judicial review rather, was sealed on that date. The order was sealed on the 26th of March. When we receive the reasons for refusing permission to appeal, I must confess that, like my lady, Lady Justice Whipple, I struggle to understand that paragraph at the bottom of Court Bundle, page 102. We have two very short submissions on this. First, the Court should proceed on the basis of judgment and the reasons set out in the judgment.
I think you're both agreed about that.
Yes, not the reasons for refusal. And if the judge was entitled to add an additional reason for dismissing ground three, we won't invite this Court to uphold that reason. So that deals with ground three. Moving on to ground four, the Court only needs to consider ground four if the Court concludes that the judge was wrong to find that the public sector equality duty was complied with on the facts of this case. And of course, for the reasons we've already outlined, we say the Court should dismiss those grounds of appeal, and so ground four simply doesn't arise. If you do get to it, we adopt what's said in our skeleton argument. We relied on section 31.2a in the alternative before the judge, essentially arguing that, given Birmingham's financial crisis, any failure to comply with the public sector equality duty would not have made any difference to the outcome. From paragraph 101 of the judgment, it's clear that the judge was fully aware of what the argument was on the public sector equality duty, and she ends that paragraph and makes the observations in paragraph 102 by concluding that, and even if these grounds are succeeded, there would have been no different outcome. Now, while the judge doesn't set out the text of section 31.2a, she was taken to it at the hearing, it was set out in her submissions, she was, of course, fully aware of the requirements of the section, and the sentences in paragraph 101 and 102 are essentially, we say, shorthand for the judge concluding that the conditions in section 31.2a were met. It might help if we look at it, tab one, page four of the Authorities bundle.
Sorry?
Tab one, page four. I know the Court will be familiar with it, but the High Court must refuse to grant relief, so it's obligatory, not discretionary, if it appears to the Court to be highly likely that the outcome for the applicant would not have been substantially different if the conduct complained of had not occurred. So the first question, what is the conduct complained of? The judge was fully aware of that, she dealt with it in that section of the judgment, the public sector equality duty. So either she would have accepted Mr. Squires' argument that the public sector equality duty had to be considered by the Cabinet, or there needed to be more analysis of the impact on the disabled. That would have been the conduct complained of. If that hadn't occurred, is it highly likely that the outcome for the applicant would not have been substantially different? So the question there is, would the counsel, would the officers on behalf of the counsel have made the same decision that they made, i.e. not to change that aspect of the charging policy? And we say it's absolutely obvious that, given the financial circumstances that Birmingham was in, those officers and indeed the counsel would not have exercised a discretion, is a discretion that they did not have to exercise, to incur an additional £1.7 million worth of spending in the adult social care budget. And we say it's important here that this isn't a case where the counsel is deciding which services to cut in order to balance the budget, it was doing that separately as part of the budget exercise. The decision here was, should we incur that additional £1.7 million spending that we do not have to incur? Because it is the discretion under Regulation 15.2 to disregard any additional income. So we say, given the background here is Birmingham had taken a loan, or had to have a loan of £1.2 billion from the central government, that they had to pay back from asset sales, given that they had had to raise council tax by 9.9%, double the norm, given that they had to make £300 million worth of savings in the next two years, given that the adult social care budget was facing additional demand-led pressures, and given the need for adult social care to make cuts of £23 million in 2425 and £52 million in 2526. My lady, the reference for that is the supplementary bundle, page 224. We say, given all of those circumstances, it is inconceivable that the counsel would have exercised its discretion to incur that additional spending. So going back to the wording in section 31.2a, was it highly likely that that is the decision the counsel would have made? We say self-evidently not. Now, Mr. Squires made the point that some cases have suggested that there may need to be witness evidence from the decision-maker as to what they would have done had the public law been made. Now, there are obviously some cases, we accept, that that will be needed. So an example, for instance, let's say there's a consultation challenge, the allegation is the decision-maker has not considered some of the consultation responses. You would then need a witness statement from the decision-maker that says, I have now read the consultation responses that I missed before, I would have made the same decision. Without that, one can't know whether the conditions emerged wanting to be met. But in other cases, the outcome is obvious from the contemporaneous documentation and from the state of affairs that existed at the time. And we say this is one of those cases. And as the judge said, if ever there were a case for accepting the 31.2a argument, it surely is the present case. My lady, so that deals with ground four. In terms of ground five, again, we adopt what we say in our skeleton argument on this. Mr. Squires confirmed yesterday that ground five only arises if he succeeds on ground one, already has our submissions as to why he shouldn't succeed on ground one, in which case I think he would have done at that point. But his additional argument was that ground five can then be used, almost a circular argument, you can use these arguments under ground five to support what he's saying under ground one. We say that gets nowhere because ground one has to be determined by reference to the statute itself, to section 149, and the submissions that I made yesterday. Section 149 imposes duty on the public authority, it is then the internal arrangements of the public authority that determines how that is exercised. And my lady, what we say is, there's nothing that the judge might have said about the margin of discretion that can somehow feed into identifying who the actual decision-maker was for the purposes of section 149, which seemed to be my lady friend's submission yesterday. All the judge is saying in the paragraphs that the Court was taking to yesterday is it's the discussion about what is the extent of the margin. She refers to the margin being afforded to the counsel, that is simply shorthand for whoever was taking the decision. The judge was fully aware of who had taken the decision, because I took the judge through the evidence in even more length than I took the Court through yesterday. There were, as is always the case now in Article 14, claims post-Superior Court's decision in SC, there were extensive submissions about the extent and breadth of the margin of discretion. Those all depended on what's the nature of the decision, is there a suspect ground, and the identity of the decision-maker. We never submitted that the identity of the decision-maker was the members of the counsel, because it obviously wasn't on the facts of this case. And there is a margin of discretion that is nevertheless available to officers taking decisions on behalf of the counsel, because they have the institutional competence that the Court does not. The fact that they are not democratically accountable goes to the breadth of the margin of discretion, but it doesn't mean that they don't have any, because they are the people appointed by the counsel to take the very decisions in question. But in short, my lady, what we say is, nothing on ground five can alter the analysis on ground one. And so for that reason, it adds nothing to the submissions. My lady, unless the Court has any questions, those are our submissions.
Thank you very much indeed, that's very kind. Yes, anything in reply?
My lady friend began with submission on how one characterises the decision in this case, and we agree that that's the correct starting point and probably perhaps the key issue in the appeal. And she took you to, through pleadings, and she took you to our reply, this was Court Bundle, page 379, paragraph 3C. And in that, she said, we'd identified the decision this way, the challenge in this case is to the current version of the charging policy.
Sorry, can you give me that page reference again?
179, Court Bundle, 3, paragraph 3C. The challenge in this case is to the current version of the charging policy. She also then said, the decision, as we'd identified it in the original claim bundle, was the charging policy itself. So she said, if you look at the index of our original application, what we described as the decision was the charging policy, so the January 2023 charging policy. And all of that's consistent with the way we describe the decision in the claim form, the decision to be issued reviewed, claimant challenges, the defendants' to introduce the 2023 charging policy without removing or revising the aspects of the policy which give rise to discrimination. And that was the date of that decision, was the 27th of January, which is when that charging policy was promulgated. But it's entirely clear, we say, this was not a challenge to a decision taken by Mr. Williams not to recommend the Cabinet amend the charging policy, taken some time between the 15th of December and before the 27th of January. We don't mention that anywhere in our pleadings. Indeed, we had no idea about that decision or decision-making process when we issued proceedings. We'd asked in pre-action correspondence on a number of occasions for any documents or minutes of meetings at which the policy was reviewed, that's in our pap letter of the 8th of February 2022, supplementary bundle 376, another pap letter, 27th of March 2023, page 395, and we weren't provided that information. So the position was, when we issued proceedings, we never identified the decision under challenge as Mr. Williams not recommending the Cabinet amend the charging policy, and we've never brought the challenge in that way subsequently. Indeed, had we done so, we would probably be out of time, because we issued the challenge exactly three months after the 27th of January, when the charging policy was promulgated, and Mr. Williams almost certainly took his decision not to recommend, not to refer the matter to the Cabinet, some time earlier than that, he received the briefing paper on the 15th of December. The decision under challenge at all times was the current charging policy, and specifically the fact that it was introduced without removing or revising, this is the claim form, the aspects of the policy which gave rise to discrimination. And the question is, if that's the decision, who's the decision-maker for that decision? For the charging policy, which is what was under challenge? My lady friend took you to section 149 of the Public Sector Equality Duty Appeal Authorities' bundle, tab four, page 20, and she said, the duty applies to the exercise by a public authority in the exercise of its functions. And we agree, well, of course, we get that's what the statute said, but the function here is the operation and maintenance of the charging policy in the form we see in January 2023. But that doesn't tell you who the decision-maker is for the purpose of the exercise of that My lady friend said, the decision-maker is the person who actually took the impugned decision, and we agree with that. But she also said, we accepted the decision-maker for the decision under challenge was Mr. Williams, and we certainly do not accept that. One starts with the decision, it's the 2023 charging policy and the failure to remove or revise the aspects which gave rise to discrimination. That means this is a failure-to-act case, it's a failure to amend, a failure to deal with an ongoing application of the charging policy. And the decision-maker, we say, for a failure to amend, has to be the person or body who could have amended. As a matter of logic, we say, it can't be a person who failed to recommend an amendment but had no power to amend it. By definition, they can't be the person who failed to amend the policy. And that also flows, we say, from the fact that the public sector equality duty is a continuing duty and a non-delegable duty. And this does raise a question of law, which I don't think there is any authority on. We've seen authorities on the non-delegable nature, and that there's separate authorities on the continuing duty, but what does it mean that it's both non-delegable and continuing? Who does that mean has to discharge the public sector equality duty in relation to the continuing aspect of the duty? Who's the decision-maker where the challenge is to the continuing aspect, you failed to amend, you failed to alter something in the policy? And as I say, we say that has to be the person with the power to promulgate, in this case, the charging policy in the way impugned, and the person has the power to amend it. Because otherwise, if the defendant's submissions are correct, we say it makes no sense of the public sector equality duty being both non-delegable and continuing, which everyone accepts it is. Because what it means, you can have a decision like this one that everyone accepts has to be taken by the Cabinet, the initial decision to promulgate charging policy, everyone accepts public sector equality duty attaches to that, they have to consider when they promulgate equality implications, everyone accepts it's a continuing duty. But the effect of Birmingham's argument, if it's correct, is that the continuing duty can then be discharged by someone who didn't promulgate the policy and had no power to alter it. And we say that can't be correct. What it means is you can have a decision in place, promulgated by the Cabinet, which only the Cabinet can change, but at no stage would the Cabinet ever be required to consider the equality implications of it. And we say that can't be right if you're talking about a non-delegable continuing duty, because the other words, I mean, at some point, it has been delegated to officers who then apparently discharge it. We say that that doesn't work if it's both continuing and non-delegable. My lords, my ladies, my lord, we submitted that the fallacy in the case was to assume it was Mr. Williams' decision under challenge, and we said, that can't be right, because we were never given any reasons, any justification or explanation for Mr. Williams' decision. And my lady friend, I think, stood up when I made those submissions and said that was wrong, it was in the 15th of December 2022 briefing document, that that contains the reasons why he didn't recommend to Cabinet to amend the charging policy. But if one looks at the briefing document, it starts at supplementary bundle 275. We say it doesn't in any way explain what his decision, again, if this is all a challenge to his decision, what we'd expect is an analysis of the reason for his decision, was it justified? That doesn't appear anywhere in the defence, doesn't appear anywhere in this Lowe's witness statement, it's said to appear here, document starts 275. You then have the various options, the first part is just the drafting changes, 275, you have the options, three options, change the Mig, disregard high rate, high rate care component for everyone rather than just for those on legacy benefits, and do nothing. Then when you get to the recommendations, that doesn't recommend do nothing, it recommends review the charging policy, so conduct another review of the charging policy, and suggests, it looks like there's parts then redacted, but it then suggests, presumably if you're reviewing it, if you then agree changes, they need to be implemented, they should be implemented, even the changes that do make a substantial difference from April 2023. So if we say, well, what's the reason, if this was really the subject of this entire legal challenge, what's the explanation or justification for Mr. Williams' decision not to recommend, not to pursue one of the three options? The answer is, we have no idea, got no evidence on it, nothing in this document.
Why does it have to be justified?
Because if that was the decision under challenge, we would expect the defendant to be defending it.
Why? What part of the PSED says you have to justify?
No, in the entire case, no, this will be-
But we're not concerned with the entire case in this appeal, are we? They're concerned with the PSED.
The submission I'm making is that the decision under challenge is the same, whether it's for the PSED or Article 14, there's only one decision under challenge. And if the decision under challenge, in the Equality Act, Article 14, we're challenging the same decision, if that decision was Mr. Williams' decision, there would need to be some reason for it, because that would be what the defendant was defending, and there never was, because that wasn't-
We know what the decision was, because we've seen the decision, we know the decision was a do nothing on the substance, but review on the small points at the beginning of this brief, we know that, don't we?
Well, I think review, this is not, the review, the charging policy isn't about the-
I thought that's what we were told yesterday, but I mean, that was merely a submission, that the review-
It was a submission.
Was the changing the first, second, third statement bits, the bits on 276 and 277. But even accepting your point that otherwise, we don't, that there's not under the recommendations, we don't see which recommendation is being preferred. What we do know from Mr. Williams' statement is that he says he made the decision and you don't like that, but then you see the January 2023 iteration of the policy that we've just looked at, and we know that that's a do nothing.
We know he didn't do, we know he went for option-
He didn't do the thing you wanted him to do, so we know that, don't we?
We know he went for option three, but if this was the decision under challenge, say it'd be the same decision under challenge for all of our grounds, there will be some sort of explanation for it, and there isn't, that's the point I make.
Well, that's your point, yeah, I've got that.
And our submission is that review the charging policy, that isn't what, review the charging policy doesn't mean make minor changes, review the charging policy means review the charging policy, and we see that's exactly-
That's actually what they did, wasn't it?
That is what they did. They can, and in fact, what they did is in, and I would say, this is the contrast, if one looks at, one can make this submission about the September review, because there, the recommendations are very clear. It's page 304, it says, implement in 18 months, don't do anything now, etc. So I entirely accept, you can look at those recommendations and say, well, appears they were accepted. These ones, we don't know why the do nothing option was changed, so I make that submission, because if that was the decision under challenge, we would expect to see that, but it wasn't. It was a challenge to the charging policy of January 2023, which is why it's that that was defended by the defendant, it was that that was the target of our claim.
Now, where we got to, I'm conscious, this is reply-
Yes, it is.
-terrorously close to the argument.
Yeah, right, I was just taking through this, that's why I was taking to that, responding to what was said about the reasons. My lady then, my lady friend then said, if there's no, given the judge's finding there was no discrimination, therefore, I think the argument was, we can't succeed on the public sector equality duty. We say that's not a good submission for two reasons. Firstly, of course, this is the link between our grounds one and ground five, our submission is if we're right on ground one, there was a problem with the conclusion under ground five. But also, it's not a good submission, we say, because the public sector equality duty goes far beyond eliminating discrimination. If the Court turns up the public sector equality duty, it's tab four of the Authorities' And the Court will see, eliminate discrimination is one of the things that needs to be considered, 149.1a, but the duty goes far beyond that, in particular, and the one that we relied on was the advance equality of opportunity, 149.1b, which is then further explained, if the Court looks down at 149.3, what does that mean? Remove or minimise disadvantage suffered by persons who share a protective age or have severe disability, C, encourage persons who share a relative protective age to participate in public life. So that is precisely the kind of equality issues that are raised by the charging policy. So even if it's right that there was nothing to consider under eliminate discrimination, there would still clearly be consideration, requirement of consideration of the impact of the policy under 149.3. My lady friend made submissions about how the case was presented below, and she said that the main focus was on Article 14, and that little was said about the public sector equality duty. But we say that misunderstands our case, the way the case was put was that our case on justification in relation to proportionality for Article 14 was very closely linked to the public sector equality duty argument, it's the same argument I'm running here about grounds one to five. So it came in in that way, and that was the way the case was put, was this is an Elias Cole, JFS case, all places where the public sector equality duty wasn't discharged, and that then fed into the analysis of proportionality. So we round the two together. We had referred in our skeleton below to non-deligability of the public sector equality duty, but I accepted that the submission of the Cabinet was the correct- duty, but I accepted that the submission of the Cabinet was the correct decision maker, was made orally. But it was made in detail in opening, in my case.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it had only been raised in reply.
No, this is why I'm responding, no, the argument was made in detail.
So you ran that the Cabinet was decision maker in oral opening, not just in reply?
Yes, yes.
So contrary to what...
No, but I think my learned friend said I handed out the constitution in reply. So she didn't say that.
Ah, I'm sorry.
This is why I thought I'd clarify, no, I don't think I'm disagreeing with anything that she says about what's happened.
My lady, I think we could, yes, Mr. Squires opened the case in that way. My response was one of confusion, saying, well, of course, officers take decisions on behalf of the council, they have delegated authority to do it. And then in reply, Mr. Squires said, no, they didn't have delegated authority. Here's the 100-plus-page scheme of constitution.
Well, thank you both for clarifying.
Yeah, that's what I thought. And what I would say is it was certainly raised squarely in opening. It wasn't said at any stage we weren't entitled, it was said the argument's wrong, but it wasn't said, you can't run this argument.
No, well, I don't think Miss Clements was saying that anyway. It hadn't got that confused.
Yeah, no, no. So the council was able to respond to it and did. The issue, as she said, is it was in response to something she had said, I produced the constitution in reply. But in fact, I think the constitution is now all common ground, which is it was only the Cabinet that could promulgate the charging policy, only the Cabinet that could change it. The question is the effect of that. So there's no, there's no particular dispute about the contents of the constitution.
Now, anything else?
That's ground one of the reply on ground one. Ground two was consideration of impact. And my learned friend took you to her table at page 57 of the supplementary bundle, which sets out the current operation, or sorry, the operation of the charging policy on the claimant at the time of the hearing. The evidence on the operation prior to that, where we got the figures of 30, 40%, et cetera, is all from Mr. Ickbell's...
But why do we need that?
...statement. For this reason, I'll come on to make, no, I was, and is that, that's where we made the submission, that routinely taking, or it could be taking 30 to 40%, particularly given the way DREs operate. And Miss Clement, this was put to her, I think, in argument, the submission we had made about the way DREs operate, the possibility of taking 30 to 40%. And her submission was that that wasn't accepted by the council.
Well, I think what was not accepted was, I think, the rather careless way that I put it to Miss Clement, that basically the council's policy, in the loosest sense, I said the word policy, was just to offer the basic and then only up it to what it ought to be, you know, when you were pushed.
Yeah.
And she said that wasn't a policy.
She said that wasn't accepted. And again, she took the court back, saying the relevant issue is the amount, the 12.8%, I think it was, that was being charged to the claimant at the time of the hearing. We say that's precisely the point on the public sector equality duty, is one does need to know what the impact, is it operating? It may well be that her submission is it's not accepted, or evidence was that is how it operates. The point...
Well, no, that's not right. You have no evidence that that was a policy. Your evidence was that so far as your lay client was concerned, when they raised it and pushed it and threatened legal action, a massive increase, rather, came his way.
Mr. Bates's evidence, which I took you to, was that is a practice.
My lady, can I just raise it? This kind of allegation was made below, and Mr. Ickbell sat behind me below, and he was absolutely outraged by this allegation. And we had permission from the judge to put in a further witness statement where he confirmed that wasn't the practice of the council. Now, that's not in this bundle because this wasn't an issue in the appeal, so we took lots of things out.
Well, I'm struggling to know why this is relevant in reply to ground two.
Because, precisely because the council's position is we don't accept that happens. Our position was...
I don't think they said it doesn't happen, they said it's not a policy.
So our submission was it's a practice. It's a relatively common practice. And the relevance to ground two is that is precisely the kinds of things that need to be assessed because that goes to the impact. If it's not known how this operates in practice, whether it's routinely 30 to 40%, routinely 10% or below, one isn't assessing the impact. That's the submission.
Okay, thank you.
My learned friend said an exercise of assessing the impact because there are so many different permutations and combinations would require examining the charging of 8,000 people in the same way, in a way akin to her table. And we say, we say that's not correct. There are all sorts of ways in which I can get at least a sense.
You've got that from my learned lord, just to spare.
I did, I did.
You need to, you've had it.
I've had it. And perhaps if I can just add, as well as potentially taking a sample, one can speak to social workers who are involved with people to get their sense of how this operates. There are all sorts of ways one can at least get a sense of. And because it is so dramatically different, whether it's 40% down to a much lower percent, one at least has to have a sense of how prevalent the claimant's experience at the beginning was if one's assessing the impact. Ground three, I don't think I have anything to add in reply. It's a question of looking at the judgment and seeing, I think we all agree, it's what was said in the judgment.
Thank you.
Ground four is the section 31-2A. 31-2A issue, the highly likely issue, which of course only arises if we succeed on one of the other grounds. And my learned friend took you to the judgment, paragraph 102, that describes the exceptional situation that Birmingham found itself in, set out the 1.2 billion pound loan, et cetera, et cetera. But all of that, we say, isn't relevant to the exercise that was being undertaken because if the decision...
So your case is that the financial crisis in Birmingham's not relevant?
The financial crisis, all of this is about what was happening in September 2023. The exercise the judge was required to conduct, if this is a challenge to a decision in January 2023, is at that stage, if there had been no illegality, is it highly likely that the outcome would have been the same? One is looking at that, that is the material time that one is looking at the illegality and deciding whether it's highly likely the outcome would have been the same. So all of that, all of the things that come six months, nine months later, are not going to answer that. The question is, you put yourself in the shoes of the decision maker at the time of the decision here, January 2023, and you ask then, is it highly likely if the Cabinet had considered the matter at that stage, if there'd be more information? And the answer, and our submission is, A, that wasn't an exercise the judge undertook, and also, we say, one couldn't reach a conclusion if there was a requirement for the Cabinet to consider it, to work out, was it highly likely the Cabinet wouldn't have changed the policy at that time? Bearing in mind that the proposal is to change, was to change, the 1.7 million is to change the policy so as to treat people currently on PIP in the same way as the legacy benefits. You've seen in the papers, there was a point made, this does seem hard to justify. So that would have been, that's where the 1.7 million would have been, to treat them all in the same way. And as I say, we simply have no idea what the Cabinet would have done had they considered that in January 2023.
What is the consequence if we were to accept that submission, but also accept that if the position was being looked at as of September 2023, it is highly likely, or perhaps, Miss Clement would even say inevitable, that the same decision would have been made? That would simply mean, wouldn't it, that if they had changed the policy in January 2023, they would inevitably have changed it back again in September, when they were constrained to make cuts wherever they could? And here's an obvious candidate.
The difficulty with that, we would say, my lord, is that they have continued, as far as we understand it, not to take the maximum relation to the legacy benefit. So we simply don't know whether they would inevitably have gone back in September. But we also say, as a matter, our submission is a matter of law, the position is it's the decision at the time is what one looks at. The answer would then be, if it then went back and the decision's made again, they may well be perfectly entitled to, they would then be required to make it lawfully, the Cabinet would look at it, if we're right on grounds one, the Cabinet would look at it, and they would look at it as of today's date, or whenever it went back to them, and they would make whatever lawful decision they could. But we say for the purposes of the highly likely test, one is looking at, it is the decision. If that had been made lawfully, is it highly likely? And that is, that's January.
So if you succeed, and if we're against you on section 31, then it goes back and they make a decision now when the financial position is apparently not much better than it was in 2023?
The answer would be the Cabinet would make the decision, they would make whatever decision they make, and they would make it, we say, correctly, taking account of the impact of the charging policy.
Right?
And that is the, as I said, if there's illegality, that is the effect, you take the decision again. There's certainly nothing, there's nothing to compel them to take the decision in any particular way, but they were required to at least consider it. My lady, that's...
So you've wrapped up your ground five reply with...
Oh, we say, ground five, I think we, the position on ground five was, I mean, other than reflecting on how one understands who the decision maker was by looking at the nature of the description of the decision.
Well, we have your submissions from how you tied them into ground one, your original submissions, thank you. Anything else?
My lady, I'm sorry to rise, but two points came out to Mr. Squires' reply that had not come out at all before. I wonder if I could just, the first is the point about the allegations. Now it's reverted from Birmingham as a policy of taking the maximum.
I think he then amended that to practice.
It was always a practice, that was the evidence.
But, my lady, as I said, that allegation was made below. I am looking on my computer at the second witness statement that was filed by Mr. Ickbell, which isn't in the appeal bundle, but was filed with the High Court, that very firmly denies that Birmingham operates either a policy or a practice in that regard. So I wonder if Mr. Squires is going to continue to advance that submission, if I can provide a copy of that witness statement to the court.
Assuming you have no objection to that, have you?
No.
Yes, thank you, Miss Clement.
My lady, the second point is that Mr. Squires has now made the submission for the first time in his reply, that when you apply the highly likely to make no difference test, you have to pretend that you're in the position you were at the time of the very first decision. And two points in response to that. The first is, as I said to the court, the decision under challenge was the 27th of January 2023.
Do sit down.
But there was a further decision taken by the council after these proceedings were issued, which is the September 2023 decision. And both of those decisions were examined by the judge, which is how the section 114 analysis became central to what was happening, it's central to the argument. So this is a typical rolling judicial review process. There's one decision, decision is challenged, a further decision is taken in the course of the proceeding. So at the very least, one is looking at the position as it was in September 2023. But in any event, when one looks at section 31-2A, the whole point is that the court should not quash decisions if it's highly likely that the same decision will be made. One doesn't necessarily examine that at the point at which the original decision was taken, if something else has happened in the intervening period. Now, obviously, by the time we watch the hearing, we're at the point of not only the 114 notice, but we're also at the point of the new budget that have been approved and the directions given by the commissioner the very day before the hearing. And one can't ignore those consequences and that state of affairs when one is applying the section 31-2A test. I'm sorry I didn't deal with that in my main submissions, but that point hadn't been raised by Mr. Squires at that stage.
Well, it's good to have both points.
Just one point, it's the language of 31-2A, you read, it's not the decision will be made, the outcome would not have been. It's a part, it's looking backwards, we say, is the effect of the language.
Thank you. Good. I think we've finished our advocacy tennis, have we? Anything? No, thank you very much, Mr. Squires. Well, sorry, can I ask you just one moment? On that very last point, if we were, is there any authority? There must have, this must have been pored over, upside and downside, mustn't it? What's section 31-2A means and what's the time at which you look at it?
I can't immediately think of the authority. That is always how I've understood and applied it and run it in many cases. We can find the best authority on that point.
If you could agree that between you, that would be helpful.
Yes, I mean, the only one it might help is one of the cases referred to by my learned friend is the Durand case. And what you will see in that, and that's the case where the test was satisfied, and there was a witness statement there put in, paragraph 73, it's authorities' bundle 23, page 870. And that was entirely, the witness was putting herself back in, she said, to the position she was when she made, when she made the decision. But we can certainly look for other authorities, that's one example.
Thank you. Well, thank you all very much indeed. We're very grateful for all the submissions and for those behind you as well. I'm not sure if anyone's acting pro bono in this matter, but so often they are. Can I, a piano plays, please, to your instructing solicitor, Mr. Squires, if I may, because to congratulate and thank them for the quality of the bundles in this case, which were just absolutely perfect and beautifully presented, and made it much, much easier to manage the pre-reading. So thank you to him through you. In a normal way, we will be reserving our judgments, we'll be sent a draft judgment in due course. Given the sensitivities in this case, and I just urge you all to be very clear about the embargo, and just bear in mind that it's not a judgment until it has been finalized. So you're typographical in minor erasome, please, not an opportunity to reargue the case. And I'd hope very much that you'll be able to agree any orders at the end of the day, but we'll deal with any outstanding matters in writing. Thank you all very much indeed.